Okay, good evening and welcome to the Pownell Select Board Meeting on this Thursday, April 17th, 2014. We have approval of the agenda, approval of the minutes for 41014. Warrants, mail, old business, animal control officer, follow-up on dog issues, Line Sync Architects, meet and greet, and new business, which is we're gonna discuss the upcoming candidate debate for selectmen, so.
Rich, can I have just a small thing on old business on cemeteries?
Cemeteries?
Just for a second.
Okay. Okay. So move?
Yeah.
Do I have a second on the agenda?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay. Approval of the minutes of four, of 414? Or, excuse me, 41014?
Almost.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Warrants. The two warrants, payroll of $6,120.39 for 41814, excuse me, from 413 to 418.
So move.
So move. And then, I got the other warrant, I'll do both of them together, okay? And the second warrant is for the, from the general fund of $44,158.97. The big issue on that, the big expense was $35,849.50 for the Bridge 42 repairs on Main Street. So those are your warrants.
So move.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? In the mail. We have a couple of things here, not too much mail this week. A liquor license renewal for the Quality Convenience Store on Route 346 in North Pownell, and also a tobacco license renewal for the same Quality Convenience down in North Pownell.
Motion to sign.
All in favor? Aye. Those opposed? Okay, we'll sign these. And also we have a Vermont Agency of Transportation, Department of Motor Vehicles Uniform Municipal Excess Weight Permit for Jacob Melville. We have a certificate of insurance, et cetera. What's your pleasure on this?
Did you repeat that?
This is a Vermont Agency of Transportation Department of Motor Vehicles Uniform Municipal Excess Weight Permit for Jake Melville.
So move. Sign it.
And then we have an Arts and Artists of Pownell Gallery Day, which will be held on Sunday, April 27th, from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m. It's free and open to the public at the Solomon Wright Library on Main Street and Pownell. You can come and meet the artists and support our local artistic community, and this is presented by the Pownell Historical Society, if anybody is interested. If you have any questions on that, you can call the office here. It's pretty self-explanatory, though. And also, last but not least, in the mail, we have a letter here for use of the tennis court area near the town office, and this, I'll read the letter. Recently, we formed a new roller derby league here in Southern Bennington County called Southshire Roller Derby. Regularly, we practice in a space we rent at the Holden Leonard Mill in Bennington, but now that the weather is nice, we're looking for a practice space we could use outside. We would like to use the former tennis courts near the town offices. We are incorporated with the State of Vermont as a nonprofit athletic organization. We are insured through the Vermont's, or, excuse me, the Women's Flat Track Derby Association, and can obtain a certificate of insurance listing the town of Pownell as an additional insured, as an additional insured. We try to use the courts weekly, taking time to keep them clean and swept. We would use chalk to mark out our track for the purposes of practice. At the moment, we envision using the outdoor space from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. on Thursdays, when the weather is good. We might like to add an additional day in the future, and as a separate request, since the courts are not used or maintained as tennis courts, we might, in the future, like to paint our track outline on the concrete using appropriate court paint. I would be pleased to meet with the board to answer any questions about the use of the space. Regards, Amy Moore, coach of the Southshire Roller Derby, and her contact information is here also. Any discussion on that?
Yeah, I'll talk about it.
Okay.
Well, I, hey, nobody else uses it, do they?
Just for the town picnic that I'm aware of.
I would make a suggestion that you would meet with them.
Yeah.
Just to find out what prevails and what they consist of.
Well, that's what I'm trying to bring to light. If there's any, anyone that has been using it, I think we need to have that dropped forward. You know what I'm saying?
Certainly, so.
But I think, I'd rather see it used. I mean, okay?
Okay.
Especially if we got somebody that will fix it up a little bit.
Okay.
So we could, should find out what their actual plans are.
Sure.
Okay? The way it looks, they've got insurance, they're covered, they're, that's what you read.
Right, right. Well, that's what it said.
That's what, that's what I meant. Well, no, that's what I meant.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so Linda, would you contact them and ask them to attend a selectmen's meeting, and also bring along a copy of their certificate of insurance for us to look at as well?
They're only gonna provide that if you say they can, you have to go get that.
Yeah, they would provide all those things anyways, right, right.
Well, I'd like to see what their coverage is before I say yes.
Well, that's right. But we can say what we want, and then we can say.
Okay. And that is your mail. I just have to sign this. Okay, old business. Can we have our animal control officer, Arvin Vincent, up to the table, please?
How are you? Good, how are you?
Good. I know it's, it's been a little while since you've been to our board meetings, and we have a couple of new selectmen, so you might wanna tell them and the people at home a little bit about yourself and how this came about.
Oh, my name is Arvin Vincent, and I'm the new animal control officer for Pownell. I ended up applying for this job over the summer last year and got it. It's been a learning curve, and there's really not a whole lot. I'm enjoying it. It's been an interesting chain of events here over the winter. What I'm currently doing right now is trying to follow up on dog licensure. The clinic was very successful, and we're trying to get together and compile that project to make sure that everybody is in compliance. And currently, I'm working with Julie Cornell to try to get her down to some of the trailer parks for those that have difficulty getting somewhere to do rabies vaccines, to make sure that they all have an opportunity to do so and register the dogs with the rabies vaccine. There is still no date on that, so that's a, to be announced when we coordinate that over the summer.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
Yeah. It will be, it would help a lot of people who don't have cars and...
Well, that's right. It takes away the excuse and makes...
Takes away the excuse.
That, you know, and, but it gives them a service, too.
It gives them a service, right.
That's right, that's right. So it works both ways.
Yes, it's, it's, it's the right thing to do.
Yep.
I can be reached, my phone number is 413-262-8849. Pretty much anytime during the day, probably won't answer a call in the middle of the night, unless it's, unless it's the state trooper. And I can't, is there anything else that you have questions on?
Well, you know, how, in general, how have things been going? Have there been a lot of complaints? I know this is your first year, you have nothing to gauge it from, really, but...
The complaints are clustered, and there are usually a lot of lost dogs, a lot of coordinating find, finding a dog, finding the owner, getting it back, trying to minimize the amount of time the dogs spend over in the kennel. I'm usually able to find the owner, or somebody calls, and we're usually able to get it from one party to another without it being a big deal. There are a few chronic issues that are still pending, and they probably will be for a while until they're completely resolved.
Okay.
And there's really no big deals that are happening right now. A lot of it is waiting on information from various parties.
Okay.
Uh, question. What is, what's the cost to, for the dog boarding?
Up at...
Wherever you take them.
Oh, we have a contract with Greatfields.
Okay.
And it's, I think it's like $17 every 24 hours.
Right.
And they feed them and do the flea baths and clean them up.
Okay.
And then if the owner doesn't, we're supposed to keep them for five days is really our obligation. There's been a few cases where I just couldn't, I had to leave them there for a little while longer.
Oh, that's okay, that's fine.
And, and I try to place them, and we've, I've only had to put one down, so...
That's good.
Yeah, that's really good.
No, I think that's good, that's, you know, I, I don't even know how to address that, but I think it's good.
Well, you can't, I mean, you just, yeah. I've got some contacts, and they're able to place quite a few of the dogs. So it's been pretty successful so far.
Right, right. You know, you know, when it comes to a, to a dog, up my way, I don't have too many at the moment, like one.
That's good.
But I've, but I've had quite a few dogs, and I miss them, I really do. They're, they're great in my business, as a farm. They're good protection, and if one is missing, I look for it.
Yep.
I mean, what I'm saying is, is it has nothing to do with cost.
No.
I mean, they, they become part of our business or a part of our world.
Right.
Okay?
Right.
So that's why I'm really, I really like to voice that, that, so it doesn't, the same, uh, pertain to a household.
Right.
Pop or, or a pet, or, or, you know?
Right.
That's right. Sometimes, you know, a couple extra days might mean a lot to someone.
Right.
So, I mean, I don't...
Most people are responsible pet owners that you have found, right?
That's right, that's what I mean, that's, that's right.
Most people are, most people are, one of the issues that, that you have in Pownell is people who are, honestly, who are multiple dog owners that let them go as a pack, because once you have, you know, four or five dogs. They do become a pack, and it is pack mentality.
That's right, that's right.
And that's when you're gonna lose chickens, and that's when you're gonna scare people, or they're gonna attack other dogs.
That's right.
So it's really important that anybody that has multiple dogs, make sure you can find them to your own property.
Yeah.
Do you have any questions for the board or anything, or?
No, just if there's anything in particular that you'd like addressed, please, you know, bring it to my attention.
Okay. And probably, if it's okay with you, I would like to ask you to come back in two or three months.
Sure.
Just, again, for a follow-up and...
Absolutely.
And to see if there's anything we need to address, and, you know, naturally, if there's anything that immediately has to be addressed, please notify Linda, one of us, et cetera. And I believe there's a question in the back room?
I'm just curious, throughout the year, approximately, how many dogs do you find that you've lost in the period that you have to deal with?
The question was, just in case they couldn't hear it, that how many dogs do you, do you find lost throughout the years that you've had a year on the job, and how many are successfully found, and what'd you say?
I probably had about 20 dogs lost and successfully found and placed back with their owners, and I've probab, I've had approximately seven dogs that have not been able to be replaced. They're abandoned dogs, neglected, and I've been able to place them, and there's only one that I haven't been able to.
So 20 dogs?
Probably 20 to 30 dogs. I haven't done a year here yet.
Yeah, but just to ballpark.
Yeah, 20 to 30, I would say. Maybe, you know, depends.
So my question to you would be, is, is there a particular venue avenue that you think that you might need, that you don't have available right now, that you would like to use to place some of these seven or one dogs? In, in addition to, let's say, the animal control person from Shaftesbury, Bennington, others, that you're not finding with the animal shelter in Bennington?
I'm not sure I understand the question.
In other words, are there dogs that you all from animal control, are you having a number of dogs from animal control that you're not finding, that you're able to communicate with Second Chance Animal Shelter?
One of the issues is the breed, and when you're dealing with pit bull or perceived pit bull crosses, they won't, Second Chance doesn't really take them, so I have to find alternatives to that. If anybody knows anybody that will pick up these kind of animals and help place them, most of them are wonderfully animals, they just have a reputation, and it's hard to place the pit bulls or pit bull type, and they may not even be pit bulls, they may be barks or crosses. Other than that, anybody that is willing to foster dogs or keep dogs, I come, you know, my, you know, 413-262-8849, I would be, you know, any help that anybody can give me on that humane society type, and would be very appreciated.
Okay, so let me just reiterate this back, make sure I understand this. So with, let's just say with all of the people that are up in Dorset, down in Shaftesbury, Bennington, and here, for the most part, the dogs you have most trouble placing would be of the pit bull variety?
Yes.
And that would be pretty much, I think, nothing else? I mean, for the mo, I mean, are there, do you have any problems placing any other dogs?
Uh, for the most part, no. I expect now there'll be puppy issues, abandoned puppy issues, because of the dogs running loose, and female dogs end on spade, and it's the spring. So I anticipate some puppy things coming, but they're easier to get rid, you know, they're easier to place. No, I've got a connection for beagles, and there's a few other folks in town that are very willing to give a hand and, and try to do placement, so for the, for, the reality is, is the pit bulls are the hardest ones.
If you had pit bulls that all of the people from this particular area could bring into a particular site and have these dogs evaluated and trained at some level, do you think you would have an interest in people adopting those dogs?
I cannot answer that question at this time, because I don't really have a good feel for that. The interest with that happening, my, I could say tentatively, yes. As far as being able to place them, I don't have the resources quite yet to know who would be able to do that, or take them for that matter.
Can I have your name for the record, please? Sandra Ravis? Are you the architect?
Uh, are you interested in trying to help us find our homes? I'd like to know a little bit more about these questions.
Yeah, the reason I'm asking...
They were very good questions, so, so I'm just trying to find out where, where this is coming from.
I understand. No, you know, like my partner, for example, she's now back at the Bennington banner, and we've started the pet page back up, and we've got that going, you know, that's, sorry about that. So, you know, I have very much of an interest in animals.
Good.
Dogs, not, I have German shepherds I train, I do shutzin' with them. I'm used to working with a different type of dog, you know, that you, for example, a pit bull or whatever. So I'm just curious as to what the, how many dogs are out there, what needs to be done? You know, I look at Steve Pepper's, as I look at, you know, the different Facebook pages that are out there, and so I don't know what the numbers are, so I'm just curious as to what needs to be done on, like, a different level, and...
I try to make every effort to get the dogs back to their owners.
No, absolutely, absolutely.
And for the most part, that does happen. And if you give me your information, I would be glad to talk with you further and see if there's some kind of reciprocal arrangement.
And I know Chris, you know, for example, with Bennington.
Right.
And Steve, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I'm not sure exactly, but maybe you mentioned, Arvin, you were checking on licenses, unlicensed dogs.
Right, that's, yeah.
Part of the procedure going on, up to the board, of course, but it might be helpful if the board was aware of how many of these aren't licensed, where you find clusters, maybe?
I can tell you that the trailer plaques are clusters.
I know, that's what I'm trying to get at, is where we have the most problem with unlicensed registered dogs not having shots, et cetera. If we could get, or could get a handle on that type of estimate, then they may be able to take a direction against park owners, being the landowners of them that rented the people in there, if there's multiple ownerships of dogs not registered, et cetera.
It, it...
Because I, I know there's big issues in these places.
Some of them are the, are repeat offenders, most of them are repeat offenders.
Absolutely, they've been that way for years with other things, and...
Yep.
There needs to be some sort of a starting point where the property owner, renter...
Right.
Is responsible to some degree.
As soon as I can get an updated list of the rabies and, and the dog license, and I can start that evaluation, then I'll determine where the issues might be, and then get together with Julie Cornell to try to, it's gonna be a little bit of, a process, to get a rabies clinic and set it up right down the end of the street of, you know, Alter, et cetera.
No, that works fine, but there needs to be...
And then, and then in writing, I'll do a report.
Right. Well, I would like to, uh... Tell me to be quiet.
I'll let you go a little longer, Henry.
Okay. I would just like to make a statement on this, bull terriers and, and that, okay? If you wanna know anything about them, I would like to have you call my wife, Cecily Strohmeyer, and ask her...
Great.
When, when she got bit by one, and it grabbed a hold of her wrist, and the teeth went right straight through in two spots through her wrist, and she walked around for over a year, having that wrist put back together and still doesn't work to this day.
I actually remember when she did that. I remember when that happened to her.
So, I would, you know, if you wanna know what can happen, I mean, the best I can say is, give the person, that person a call, and she'll fill you in.
Well, we're very pleased with the job you're doing.
No, I am too, but I just, since the terrier, since they came up.
Right.
I just thought I would add that.
Well...
And take it from there, and you are right.
What's...
Some are very nice, and some can...
It depends on how they were handled.
Handled, I guess, as, as a pup or something, I...
Right.
They can be a very jealous, they're right?
They're protective.
Protective or jealous?
They're self-protective, if you think of them in terms of, like, a dog that's food protective.
Very good. I just had to add that.
That's great.
And, and what's, what's unfortunate is...
And they don't let go.
What...
And they do not let go.
The pit bulls do, yeah, right.
You know...
The ones that look like pit bulls, that are other kind of terriers, that might be boxers.
Well, that's right.
And they're not, those are the ones that get mistaken for pit bulls.
Or, that is correct.
Yeah.
That is correct.
Yeah.
But the other ones, when they lack on, they, I mean, they grab, they grab, and they stay there.
Some of the sweetest dogs I've ever met are pit bulls.
The dogs lock on?
Yeah, but they do.
But, okay.
It used to be German shepherds, and before that, it was dopings and rottweilers and...
Okay. But, but I like dogs, I mean, I can't, I can't help it.
Pit bulls can be...
Okay.
And I can sympathize with you on the placement deal, because my neighbor's an insurance man.
Okay.
Right.
He says there's a lot of six-figure things.
Because of...
So, I mean, I have a rental property.
The terriers, yeah.
I don't, I won't allow a...
No, I, I'm at the same one.
Rottweiler or a pit bull in there. He advised me to that, so, and that's why they're harder to place.
Rottweilers are so good dogs, they're such good dogs.
They may be, but it's, uh...
Well, any dog that's...
An insurance man tells you that.
Yeah, oh, well, that's because they're the, yeah.
Because they're an insurance man.
They get a bad rap.
They have a bad rap, yeah.
You're, you're right. Okay, very good. Thanks.
Well, thank you very much for coming in.
You're welcome.
Okay.
You're welcome.
Before you go, I took that off my email for you today, in my wish to attend that.
Okay.
Thank you very much, Arvin.
You're welcome.
Very good.
Happy Easter.
Okay, happy Easter.
Okay, next on the agenda is Line Sync Architects, a little meet and greet with the select board here. How are you?
Hey there.
Good, my name is Rich Rider.
Rich Joseph.
Vice Chair, Joseph. Henry Strohmeyer.
Richard.
Ronnie Bassan. Linda Sharapa. So, and we have our building committee present as well.
Hiding in the corner, yeah.
Yes.
Hiding in the corner.
Who would like to start this? Steve?
New folks asked for the meeting.
Okay. Well, we wanted to meet and greet the architects, so we...
Well, I have something to say.
Okay.
Um...
Let the architects speak.
Okay.
Come on.
I'm sorry, I didn't know you were, were you part of the firm?
I'm Julie Lynder, yes.
Big bubble chair.
I'm the owner.
I'm sorry, I don't know if you were...
That's all right.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Promoted, yeah?
Yeah, come on, Frank.
Sure.
For the time being.
You're gonna take this away from me, aren't you?
Fair.
Um, I'd like to say that our, one, we thank you for the commission. We think this, we live in Wilmington, as you know, and we have a town that's not all that different than Pownell, and we know that when our town, before, before Joseph was a registered architect, and our town did our town offices, it really made the running of the town more smoothly. You know, to have something that people could efficiently work in, where people could have a meeting in, and we thank you for the opportunity, and we look for, we've already had a few meetings. Linda and I became known on first-name basis very quickly when our computers had trouble talking to each other, and I think it was the rainstorm.
Maybe.
You know, because the next day was fine. So I would just say thank you, and we look forward to exceeding your expectations.
And roughly, I'm not, you know, I'm looking for a rough timeline here. When do you think you'll have something for the building committee to look at, to present to the board of selectmen, months?
Well, when we did the, the proposal, they asked us to have it completed by September, and then we heard that you have a vote coming up, and if possible, can we have it ready so that you can present it at the August vote, and yes, that will not be a problem.
And that's fine, or, and if not, we have two. You can either have the one in August and November, right? November, right?
Well, if you're gonna move on it, you wanna move on it, um...
Okay.
So, yeah, we'll be able to do that.
Okay.
And who, who's your primary contact on the building committee? Who do you...
Frank.
Frank, okay. You're the point person, okay. And you, you, as far as the committee goes, you've discussed what it is you're looking for from the architects. I know that they presented a series of drawings, I guess they were, on some of the other aspects of buildings that you've done, and, you know, hence going forward with you.
Yes.
I do have to say, though, it's interesting, we had a meeting this week. We had, Joseph came down and brought a whole herd of people with him, from up on the mountain, from his firm, and it was really refreshing. from his, uh, firm. And it was really refreshing to watch them react with our people. Linda was here, Barbara was here. Unfortunately, Ellen and Karen couldn't be here. But, uh, just to watch the reaction and the ideas that flowed back and forth and it was very casual. And yet it was very productive and we got a lot of work done. And, uh, I think Linda will contest this, that, uh, it was nice to have input from the town employees. Uh, that they were asked for input. And they gave us some great input. They really did.
Great.
So I think we're off on a good start. I'm sure you will be hearing more soon. And these folks, the ball's in their court to come up with, uh, whatever the plan or plans are.
A miracle, right?
A miracle.
Perfect building that's gonna cost nothing.
Yes. You heard, I want you to know, I want you to know, you heard it here first. It was a building that's going to cost us nothing, right here.
Well, I, I have a couple things, just, uh, uh, did any, uh, was this ever considered, uh, you know, the, I understand the cost was considered. But, uh, what would fit our tax base in town? Or did you ever, uh, the people that's gotta foot the bill for this? Uh, I mean, that all comes into the size of what we're putting together. Am I correct or not?
You are.
Okay. All right. So I mean, it, it all boils down to paying. Uh, uh, can, you know, to get approved, we gotta try our very, very best to, um.
We went there, Henry.
Okay, good.
We were crazy. We sold them to work with.
Yeah, we already, we already worked on that.
Well, I'm sure you did. I just wanna bring that to light. Okay.
Well, and we're also. We're also gonna be exploring, there are different types of grant opportunities, especially if you look into, uh, some of the energy efficient measures that you can do. So we're, you know, once we have an idea of what it is, once, I, I run the business. He runs the design aspect. So once they do their magic, then, then we'll get, and just try to see is where we can, where else we can get funding.
Okay, okay.
Well, as I said, we live in Wilmington. We know how it is.
Mm-hmm.
I think the nice thing that, uh, that we noticed right off with these folks was the fact that they were very flexible. They didn't come in with a preconceived idea and say, yep, small, okay, this size town, yep, this is, this is what you gotta have. Here it is. Uh, they've already talked about economies and how we can save some money and what can we do and what kind of ideas can we come up with? So I think, Henry, you're in good hands. We're all in good hands.
Okay, well, I mean, I, I think the main, I think our main thing is, is if, if we're gonna present it, um, I don't. How do you say that without? I don't think you're gonna have a lot of, of, uh, votes. I think people will, in this town will, send a strong message one way or another. And, and that's why I'm trying to really, uh, be sure that we're doing our best to, um, present something that is worthy. That, is that the right words?
You, you don't wanna present something that's just gonna get eighty percent of people saying, no, this is ridiculous.
That is correct.
You want something that says, okay, let's think about this. What are the long-term costs? What is the cost benefit? What is the return on the investment for the town? And how do we make it so that, you know, the people that do the tax burden?
I mean, our board has worked on this for many years. I don't know. Twenty, all right.
We, we've been there, Henry. We, we went through this before and threw out the elusive dream that couldn't happen. And that scared the taxpayer.
That's right.
So we've gone into this a lot more overnight and these people.
Yeah, well, you found out where to go.
With us on where we plan on standing and what we expect.
But at the same time, you gotta do something. The town, not you, the town of Pownell has to do something before, I don't know what to say, um, with the television, before OSHA comes down here, you know? It's, um, it's, it's, it's not, uh, a safe work environment.
We need change. There's no question about that of some sort. And, and, um, and I know that the committee here, uh, has put a lot of time, energy and effort over the years into it. Um, and, and I can speak on it to that effect. I mean, uh, you might not believe this, but, uh, I did start that committee. Okay, so I was gone a little while, but then I came back here. But, so it isn't a new.
I thought you liked the Lily Gunger when.
Okay. Well, I don't know. There's no question I was reborn, but, uh. I won't get into that.
Do you have any questions, uh, for the board directly, uh?
We really, um, don't at this point. We, we've asked questions, uh, at our meetings and the answers have been more than forthcoming. You have some very energetic, um, volunteers and I appreciate that. Um, getting, nobody's afraid to speak up. Linda, I appreciate your comments. They, they hit home in terms of guiding what's gonna make, make your town employees work more efficiently. Right now, this not only is bad for code, I mean, this doesn't really meet code. We know that, right?
Mm-hmm.
All right, so I'm not, I, but you're, so you're wasting money on an energy. You're wasting money on productivity. There's, people cannot hold meetings in this place, um, effectively. And so you're.
Glad you added that, effectively.
Yes. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Effectively is what it's about. I mean, we can all work in really bad circumstances. But when you're doing it time, time and again, and you're paying taxes on that, that, that's where we can, we think we can help.
Okay. Well, I'm sure we're all anxious to see a design, uh, that you'd come up with and we'll be talking it out, so. Any other questions?
Well, I'd just like to say that, uh, and probably, uh, one of the, um, reasons why we wanted you folks here was so that we'd have a committee and the board, uh, whatever, whoever they would be, um, all in the same room, uh, at least, uh, saying, okay.
And you know who we are, we know who you are.
You are, that's correct. Uh, thanks for, okay.
Well, thanks for making the trip down here. And by the way, how are things in Wilmington? The recovery's going on pretty well?
We are, we are.
Good.
As I had told the building committee, we're, I'm part of a group, um, called the Wilmington Fund VT. And we're funding businesses starting down in our historic village again. And it's, it's coming along quite well.
Did you have a question?
No, just a curiosity thing. Um, since we're discussing this, and it's not the reason why I came, but since you're discussing it as a Pownell resident, is there any view of keeping the aesthetics of the old in the design?
That's your.
Oh, a- absolutely, absolutely.
Because, I mean, I see all these buildings today, they're just these little simple square buildings that, yes, they're efficient. But they're not keeping the old Vermont.
Uh, no, uh, we wanna respect the context. This is a beautiful.
I think that's in your mind, right?
Beautiful setting. Um, you've got some strong adherents on the committee who, who are arguing that point of view, but I, I won't put.
Probably. I, like I said, I just, I showed up for another reason, but I'm just one of those people that probably'd like to keep it old.
Well, thank you. And, and, you know, we did see some conceptual, or some actual drawings that, uh, your company did and they were very nice. They were, you'd be surprised what they can do, so, um.
We have a saying in our office, it really doesn't cost any more money to make something beautiful. You just have to do it efficiently.
Yeah. Great.
Who knows?
Well, I'd like to thank the committee and you folks for coming up here tonight. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
And look forward to seeing you again.
Look forward to it.
Steve, you wanted, uh, to talk about, uh, some, uh, cemeteries?
Yeah, I don't.
Come outside.
Okay.
Give him a heart hat.
Well, why don't we just wait a minute? Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Absolutely. Come up where you're comfortable.
I just moved another chair. Okay, last year we had a couple instances involving our cemeteries, which were either overlooked or forgot about or something. We have a flag pole, um, that when I was on the board, we did find to get together. And I don't know if that's been installed yet. And this board needs to get on that to get it done before. Exactly. Along with checking with the flags.
Well, I think that, I think that part has been taken care of.
Yes.
Uh, that is gonna, that went right into the, uh, bids for the lawn care.
Okay, that's, okay. We asked to do that, but we weren't sure.
Okay, no, that, that happened.
The only other thing then?
All of it. All of it. The flowers, uh.
Flowers too?
Fill me in, so, cause I didn't check it though. Okay.
Okay.
I thought they said.
Flowers.
There were just, just the flags.
Right.
Or just the lawn care and the flags.
Just the lawn care, make sure the flags are out.
I think we have to put the flag pole up.
Yes, yeah, that's.
They were gonna be sure the ropes were there and all the other stuff.
We have a new flag pole for North Pownell. That was broke, so that needs to be.
You're correct, Steve. Yep.
So, you know, it's just, you've got a little bit of time, but if it gets forgotten in the hassle.
I do know that, um, I believe that, uh, as far as the flag pole, I believe that is over at, um.
Town garage.
Should be, yes.
Town garage, correct?
Yeah. And that's why I say it needs to be installed, so. So then your next thing is you have to work on the flowers. Last year we got into a problem where they weren't done. The board was fortunate enough to ask the seniors and the seniors gracefully did the planting for us. So I would suggest the board look into that again and find out. Either by talking to them or talking to somebody about doing this planting being, it is gonna be coming up. It's just, you know, you get ahead of the curve and you've got a few minutes, so.
Okay, I appreciate that. Yeah, I think we're all set with the, uh, flags and the flag pole. And I, I think, uh, uh, we will get in touch with the senior centers and see if they would wanna do something with that.
They were very good, Burton.
Okay.
Supplied flowers, which is usual.
Yeah.
But, you know.
All right.
They should be contacted.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, um, new business, um, I, I believe the only thing on new business is I'd like to remind everybody, we have a debate, a public debate coming up here. And it is on April twenty-fourth at seven PM at the Pownell School Library. And we have Elizabeth and Jason, who are running for a one-year term as a select board member. Is it two-year term? Thank you.
Two-year.
Two-year term?
To finish out.
That's right, to finish out Dale's. Um, so I encourage the townspeople, uh, to come down to the Pownell Library. And, uh, there will be questions and answers. And, uh, you can get a, a, a good feel for both candidates. It's an important event. It's your town. So, um, don't forget, that is the twenty-fourth, seven PM, the Pownell School Library. Anything else under new business? I'll take a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor? Thank you very much. Have a good night.